President.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Griff Vadié, pastor emeritus of Kingman Presbyterian Church, after which I'd ask you to stand and then, of course, we would have the pledge of allegiance and I'll leave you in that.
Sovereign God, a new year has begun for the city of Kingman, its council and its citizens. Within the next 12 months, there will be many challenges and opportunities that will present themselves to this community and its elected leadership. We ask of you, O Lord, who knows all things, to grant your divine guidance, wisdom, discernment and direction to Mayor Watkins and all the elected council members throughout the year of 2023. Whether the issues at hand are dealing with the budget constraints or negotiations concerning county and state matters, may the elected leadership of our community continually seek your advice, aid and blessing, O Lord. These things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item one on our agenda, appointments. Item one A, Parks, Aquatics, Recreation and Golf Commission reappointments. The Parks, Aquatics, Recreation and Golf Commission has two members whose terms expired on December 31, 2022. Both commissioners, John Engelson and Julie Lawson, have indicated a desire to be reappointed for a full term from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2026. On the P A R G commission, staff recommends approval. I'm sorry, who is assigned to Parks?
That would be me, Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Samley.
Thank you. I did have a chance to look at their applications and with this being a reappointment, I just want to say thank you to the two of them that want to continue. Commissioners often don't get appreciated enough, so I appreciate you and I look forward to, since I'm the new liaison from the council to the commission, I look forward to working with each one of you. So, would you like a motion?
Yes, would you make a motion, please?
All right, so I make a motion that we appoint John Engelson and Julie Lawson to a full term from January 1, 2023, December 31 to December 31, 2026, on the Park Commission.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number two, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for particular group, person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Now, I know most of you are here in chambers tonight, especially concerning on our consent agenda, item 3G. So, those of you who have filled out forms, if you would like to save your comments till when we discuss that, I have a feeling it's going to be pulled from the consent agenda to discuss. So, we do have one person who would like to speak to us about something different and that's Wayne Hollins. Wayne, if you're up, would you like to come up here and address council?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I want to talk about water. That's been in the news and on our minds quite a bit lately and it's a pretty important thing to have, especially in our desert community. I know the city and the county have some large projects that they're proposing and in the works to do, but I think we ignore the people who live here in the city and in the county, what contribution they can make to putting water into the ground so we can, we get the water into aquifer. So, we, I'm with the, also a consultant for the Water Conservation Education Program with the Big Sandy Conservation District and along with a commissioner with the Clean City Commission. The city or the county has put out a couple guides available at the Flood Control District over at their office and stuff that the people can stop by and pick up a copy and it'll give them an overview of some of the things they can do and some statistics of how much water they can save and stuff like that. So, I'm looking to advocate for some training opportunities to train the people who live in the city and the county, of course, because we all, it's water and it needs to go for everybody. So, we can all contribute to that. And I see some projects in the city that's happening with businesses and stuff like that. I see very little in the way of private property holders and stuff like that doing water conservation and harvesting and stuff like that. They can make a big contribution to that if we can get enough of them to do it, but most of them, I would say, don't have the idea of what can be done. So, we need to train them to do that and we have no incentive for anybody to do anything, unlike Tucson and stuff. They can get a rebate for installing water conservation things and gray water systems and stuff like that. We have nothing. So, we need to have something to motivate the people to do more than what they're maybe willing to do otherwise. So, I'd appreciate any support we can get to do that. And I'm trying to get, I should be all set up to be able to give classes at the Mojave Community College also. So, I'm there and trying to do that, but I would like more support from the city and the county to get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollins. Item number two, I mean, I'm sorry, item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items A through G. Counsel?
I'd make a motion to approve pulling item G.
Okay, so, okay. So, we have a motion to approve all items except for item G. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Counselor Walker, starting with item G.
I knew we had a lot of people signed up.
Actually, if you want to read that, Mayor, so everybody knows.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Item G, authorization for the mayor to execute a pre-construction services contract for the downtown infrastructure project with Bannekey Construction. On October 4, 2022, the city council approved a pre-construction services proposal for the Beale Street Infrastructure Project, also referred to as the Downtown Infrastructure Project, with Bannekey Construction. That agenda item, however, failed to include a copy of the contract for execution. This agenda item, upon approval, will authorize the mayor to execute the pre-construction services contract for the proposal that was approved on October 4, 2022. Staff recommends approval. Okay, so, Mr. Walker?
I pulled it because I knew we had a lot of people signed up to talk, so we can let them talk and then if we have any discussion amongst ourselves.
Great. And Mr. Plante?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As indicated, this is a housekeeping item, contract. We didn't ask to have that authorized, didn't include that. There was a proposal that was signed and this is, again, I just want to clarify, this is pre-construction services, so we're finalizing design. That includes the A contractor that's doing VE and some work with us to get to the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price. So, with that, well, if you have any questions that I can address on that.
Okay, thanks, Jack. So, what are we, what dollar amount are we proving for this? That's really the cusp of what everybody's here for, I think, is what dollar amount are we talking about? This is a pre-construction contract, not the construction contract.
Correct, not construction. That would require another council approval and I apologize, I don't remember it right off the top of my head, but it's $100,000 and some change.
Okay, okay. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Plante?
I do have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Plante, other than if we approve this $100,000, what else do we have into the project dollar-wise? I mean, irrespective of staff's time and all the work that went into the pre-planning?
I apologize, I should have those numbers. I don't have those off the top of my head. So, we did have a design contract with the engineering firm that's doing the design. Can't remember the exact dollar amount on that. That is close. We're expecting actually the 100% plans probably this week. And so, I'm sorry, 95 is the revised. So, I don't have that dollar amount off my head, but I could get that back to you.
It's approximately $425,000.
Okay, so, all in all, we could be into it for a half a million.
Correct.
Thank you.
No, we will be into it for half a million.
Thank you for the correction.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, any other questions for Jack?
Mayor Watkins.
Yes, Counselor Pat.
Mr. Plante, when we're getting to the guaranteed maximum price, can you give us a ballpark figure of what the guaranteed maximum price for the entire streetscaping downtown infrastructure project would be?
So, that's actually due to us this week, budgeted with $7 million and anticipating the project to come in in that budget number.
Okay, yes, Counselor.
First, I just want to, I just want to make it clear, this item will come back one more time for the construction piece. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, can you tell us the basics of what that $7 million pays for? Because I know in the community, I'm hearing, spend it on streets, but I know this is listed in the budget as a streets project. And there's also some concerns that this is just to plant some trees and flowers. I happen to know it's more than that and I'd like you to just give us an overview of what will, this project will entail.
Sure. First off, there is a project website, so I direct the community there, which has the current level of plans that we're at. Again, there's comments on those. We've been working with the designer. So, that project is a big one for accessibility. Quite honestly, everything from the front of the buildings will be improved, sidewalks, ADA ramps, asphalt. So, there is some landscaping and things that go into that, but the major component of the project is ADA improvement and street.
This Beale Street will be repaved as part of this?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other comments from council? This is a major facelift for downtown, for Beale Street.
It would be, for sure.
It will be, when it's done. And it'll beautify our city a lot. Okay.
Mayor, just clarification. This is, as Jack mentioned, this is a housekeeping item. The contractor has been doing the work. They are owed money and this is part of the approval of what the council approved in October for the finishing of the, basically the plans, 100% completion of the plans. That, there's been some confusion about whether this is for the actual construction. It is not for the actual construction, so I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that. The contractor, as part of the process, was brought in to help finalize 100% of plans. The bid process to identify the contractor was done and what was missing from that October meeting was the quest, the question to ask the council to approve the signing of the contract. And the contractor has already been doing the work to help bring the plans to 100%. So, just want to make sure that everybody knows that this truly is a housekeeping item, so.
Correct. This is just basically paying for what we've worked that's already been done. Okay. Any other comments from council? Hearing or seeing none? I'd like to have a motion approving item.
Mayor.
Well, no, actually, I'm sorry, we have lots of people here. So, we will turn some time over to them. I apologize for that. Let's start with Gary Waters, Jr.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Gary Waters. I live at 309 North 7th Street, downtown Kingman. Lived downtown for 20 years. I support this project. Living downtown, I've often asked myself why I live in a historic district. And just over time, it's hard to put into words, but over time I've found quotes or writings on the subject. But I found one in particular that I think really speaks to why, at least I am interested in downtown and probably why a lot of other people here tonight are. And it comes from Abraham Kuiper, who was Prime Minister of the Netherlands from 1869. Anyway, what is it in the architectural styles of our old cities that so charms the visiting stranger? What else but the infinite variety and width or narrowness, the looseness of twists and curves, the pointed obtuse angles that tell you that they were not made but grew? It is as if a mysterious history speaks to you from every curve and narrows. You can immediately tell that no shoddy, money-hungry developer threw up that line of houses, but that every dwelling is the fulfillment of a personal dream, a precious product of quiet thrift, based on a personal plan and built slowly from the ground up. Anyway, that speaks to why I'm here tonight and maybe a lot of other people here, but it definitely speaks to why tourists come here. My son and I, we walk downtown a bit. He's five years old. We help tourists when they, we come across them. We direct them to, you know, Matina's or the Minelli House or where Clark Gable was married. But in doing so, we ask why they came and the answer's always a little different, but underlying them, they come for something unique, something they can't buy off a shelf, that's not prepackaged and fake. They come for sincerity, basically, something that's sincere. And whether it was the powerhouse or the train station or the courthouse or the art building which was renewed or the theater which is in the stages of being renewed, something caught their eye and caused them to take a minute to stop and not just visit, but learn something from our community. And what better investment is there than investing in the public spaces where we encounter these people? I mean, on these sidewalks downtown is where we meet them. If you could just give a little spit and polish to downtown, there'll be all the more people that come here to visit. Now, I live downtown. I've been through, from the Dark Ages to this Renaissance over 20 years, and I've seen these investments have made a direct positive increase in tourism and just the appearance of downtown, which used to be neglected. So, I strongly suggest that the council will support this infrastructure project and I just commend the city for all the hard work they've done over the years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. As a reminder, you will have three minutes or less, of course, but to speak. Ms. Sherry, is it Herdricks or Cherie?
Hendricks.
Hendricks, yes. Thank you, Sherry.
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. I've been a resident of the city of Kingman for over 40 years. My husband is Mike Hendricks, former county manager and county engineer. He would have been here this evening, except he had a minor procedure yesterday and he's staying at home and sent me. From newspaper articles, we just found out that the city received roughly $7 million from the Arizona CARES Act and the American Rescue Act. We also understand and we're surprised that the city is proposing to use most, if not all, of these funds on the Beale Streetscape project. The city's road maintenance program and road maintenance needs have been historically underfunded, which has been compounded by the defeat in November of your road sales tax initiative. Even though the improvements to Beale Street would be nice, we would ask that the city focus your priorities and the $7 million on maintaining and preserving our valuable roadway, roadway, infrastructure and residential streets. I thank you and appreciate the opportunity to address the staff today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hendricks. Our county supervisor, Travis Lincolnfilter.
Good evening, Mayor Watkins, Vice Mayor Samley, council members. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you this evening. I've seen things that would elude, I'm not sure if it's true or not, that the funding for this downtown improvement project may or may not be in jeopardy. So, as a private citizen, I just wanted to come and give my three minutes, if I could. You know, living here for basically all of my life, I can remember many times when the city of Kingman has shot itself in the foot. In the 80s, they gave away their primary property tax. That led to the city of Kingman being primarily dependent upon local state, local sales tax, state shared revenues, which is your second revenue source. Because of that action, you've seen really no annexation activity happen at the city of Kingman, which has led to the unincorporated areas immediately surrounding Kingman being built up. All of those citizens of our area, they use, what do they use? They use your general funded roads. They use your general funded public safety. They use your general funded parks. But the city of Kingman isn't getting $1 of state shared revenues for anybody that doesn't live in their city limits. So, you're probably today getting like half of the state shared revenues that you probably should. So, no primary property tax, about half the state shared revenues that the city of Kingman, for its size, should be getting. And then, twice now, once in 2018, and then just recently, the citizens of Kingman have voted down a very miniscule local sales tax to maintain their streets. We had the local dedicated tax prior to the 2018 vote. A prior council successfully paved Stockton Hill Road, Andy Devine, with monies that were dedicated from that fund and as a consequence, the city was able to see some very successful Route 66 street drags on a very brand-new Route 66. People came from all over. Again, another time the city shot itself in the foot was the Rancho Santa Fe or the Rattlesnake Wash, where at one time there was a 30% match required to get it built. Didn't happen. So, I just want to say, communities that invest in themselves see private capital investment. I mean, you're seeing that with the Beale Street Theater, the Hotel Brunswick, the Electric Vehicle Museum. And the only thing really under your control still is broadening your sales tax base that you have. So, I would just encourage you to stay firm, to do everything that you can to help your economic development and tourism, create this downtown district, something that's going to last more than just a Band-Aid few years. The funding that we spent in 2018 on the roads, already fallen apart, haven't given us any more state shared revenues, any more sales tax. So, just think to the future. Make a place where all of us, as Kingmanites, can be proud of and that the citizens and the tourism industry can use to our city's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lincolnfilter. Ms. Christine Frederickson?
Hi, city council members. Thank you for having me. My name is Christine Frederickson and I am the chair of the Kingman Center for the Arts. I would like to convey my strong support for the downtown infrastructure design project, both as a KCA board member and as a citizen of Kingman. I emailed the council and I'm just going to read some of my words for the group. As a KCA board member, I understand the value of this streetscape improvement and beautification that it could bring to the theater and downtown merchants. Not only would downtown appear more welcoming and attractive to tourists and locals, it would also increase the safety of the current walkways, which are sadly cracked and subject to flooding. With new, exciting shops, restaurants being added to downtown, along with the theater being renovated, it is time that the city's downtown infrastructure was improved to meet the level of the business developments. The downtown infrastructure design project has the potential to turn Kingman's downtown into a thriving center in which people from all the surrounding communities will want to gather. The renovation of the theater will bring hundreds of people to downtown to see historic cinema, community theater productions, recitals and performances by traveling artists. The downtown infrastructure design project will provide a beautiful and safe atmosphere needed for those many community members who will come to the theater and the many downtown businesses. As a citizen of Kingman, who has lived in many other cities in both Canada and the United States, the downtown infrastructure design project means more to me than just a good business decision. This project will create a sense of pride and community, the importance of which can neither be understated or overvalued. This project will create an area of town that is beautiful, inviting and modern. We are surrounded in Kingman by natural beauty, but streetscape design and safe and beautiful pathways are also needed. Thank you for all the hard work you do and thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Frederickson. Next, Christina Mickelson?
Hi, my name is Christina Mickelson and I am the executive director of Kingman Center for the Arts. We are a local nonprofit arts organization with the mission to establish and enrich the culture and community of Kingman, Arizona, through art-related education, performances and venues. We currently have two properties in the downtown area that we manage, a visual arts gallery at the corner of 4th and Beale Street and the Beale Street Theater, which is currently under renovation at the corner of 3rd and Beale Street. We also have an education center that we're involved in at 204 East Beale Street. So, we have an express interest in the downtown district and its development. One of our biggest concerns is for the Beale Street Theater. Current design plans for this property include seating for around 290 people. Our current plans are to offer shows, movies and live entertainment every weekend and many weeknights for the community to attend. If we are able to fill even half of these seats, it will bring much-needed foot traffic into the area to frequent not just our business, but our neighboring businesses as well. Plans for infrastructure that include parking and crowd movement are vitally important to making a visit to the theater and downtown businesses a pleasant experience as opposed to a frustrating one. Other concerns include transportation and access to our businesses and accessibility. We are continually having issues with accessibility on the sidewalks, especially on the 200 block where our studios are. We are, we support a cohesive plan for the streetscape of the area. A while ago, we asked about a large planter in front of our visual arts gallery and how we could make that look better. And the response we received was that we could do whatever we wanted with it. Having some guidelines stemming from a visual plan would offer a better aesthetic to visitors and residents for the whole area. We feel that having an attractive downtown district gives residents something to be proud of, as it is tied to the city's history and to its heart. So, we support continuing with the, the. So we support continuing with the planned economic development of the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mickelson. Mrs. Beth Ferry?
Hi, my name is Beth Ferry. I'm a forty-two-year resident of Kingman, Arizona. A few years ago, my husband and I purchased a commercial building in downtown Kingman. We have made extensive repairs to this building, ensuring that our building meets ADA current codes. I'm also a volunteer with Kingman Main Street, so I have spent countless volunteer hours working to enhance our downtown community. Most recently, our work included the Kingman Tours, a walkabout with Jim Hankley. This project is by no means exclusive to the much work that have been done by other dedicated individuals. As you've heard, the Beale Street Theater is a jewel, and we are so excited about the renovation. The downtown merchants have worked, the Rotary Club provides wonderful activities. We have weekly food distribution events that benefit those individuals who are finding themselves in need. There are many more activities going on downtown that I can't mention because I only have three minutes. There is no doubt that our downtown is becoming a destination. According to a respected realtor in our community, commercial properties in the downtown area within the last one hundred and eighty days are averaging two hundred and six dollars per square foot. The central Kingman commercial properties are averaging ninety-nine dollars per square foot. They say most of this is due to availability. The demand drastically outweighs the supply. So my point being that downtown is a place where people want to be. The people who are opposed to this infrastructure project seem to think that this is about nice trees, pretty flowers, and whatnot. My concern is that this project is going to be making Beale Street ADA compliant, sidewalks ADA compliant, ramps, driveways improved, storm drainage, better street lighting, bump outs to slow traffic, of which just about two months ago, we had a pedestrian hit in front of our commercial building. That was not a pleasant sight. Clearly marked crosswalks, mid-block crossings, these are all components that Stockton Hill has. These are all components that Airway has. These are all components that Andy Devine have. These are all components that Walupi Mountain Road have. So when people say, "We want these funds to be used for streets," hey, I agree totally. And I propose that we use it for Beale Street, which is a street. A street with many businesses and more to come. But I'll tell you the difference between Beale Street and the rest of the streets is that Beale Street is the core street of our downtown. In doing research, it has been found that common thread with each successful community, they started with downtown districts. That's a vision we need to adopt. With all this said, the building owners, the business owners, the volunteers, the patrons of our businesses, the tourists, the community groups, we all are doing our part. You simply cannot expect us to fundraise, though, to build Beale Street and make it appropriate. This is a mess. Beale Street is a mess, and it needs to be fixed. We're asking for the same city support that other commercial streets in Kingman get. That's it. We hope to have your vote for support.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferry. Ms. Sarah Ferry?
Hi, y'all, that's my mom right there. So my, my, um, my message to you is a little bit different tone. So, uh, dear mayor, vice mayor, and council members, thank you for our service to our community. We really appreciate it. And City of Kingman staff, we love and appreciate you guys. You're kicking butt, and you are amazing. So I'm Sarah Ferry, a lifelong Kingmanite and downtown resident of Kingman, Arizona. I'm a downtown business owner and volunteer for our downtown nonprofit, Kingman Main Street. I was also one of the original organizers of the Downtown Kingman First Fridays. I served on the Kingman Clean City Commission. My family chooses to live, play, and stay here. Community engagement and improving quality of life are our core values that guide me. I'm speaking tonight to ask you to listen to our helpers, to listen to the folks that love our community, to those of us that work tirelessly, giving our blood, sweat, and sometimes literal tears, to make this home of ours the kind of place it has the potential to be. It's easy to find people in our community that complain about the state of our roads and the lack of stores, but I ask you to listen closely and represent those of us that are investing in our community. We are members of the community that will volunteer to help care for our parks and trails and events that bring joy and funding to our city. We will welcome new visitors and residents and share the good things about Kingman. Some of the individuals that oppose this project also mention that they voted against Prop four fifteen. Each year, our city staff gives an informative presentation to our community about the desperate state of our roads, but when given the opportunity and asked to contribute specifically to our roads, these individuals voted against that. Is it fair for them to now ask that the dedicated funds for this project be reallocated to fixing potholes? There is a way that we can all win. We all want street improvements. This downtown infrastructure design project is more than just beautification. It is a street improvement project that promises to bring more revenue to help us fund our needs as a city. And it will provide a safe, accessible, well-lit space for our, for our community to enjoy and gather, an opportunity to give back to all of the people that get up, stand up, show up each day, and dream and work to make our community a better place for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferry. Lori Voss Barthlow?
Good evening, council. I'm Lori Voss Barthlow, and I wrote to you all. You probably read it. I'm not going to read my letter. I just wanted to say, I thought I understood that this project might be scuttled. And if I misunderstood, I'm here tonight to advocate for it. If I misunderstood that, I apologize. I certainly don't want to waste your time. I would only emphasize that I'm also a native Kingmanite. I've been around for a long time, and over the many years have worked on a lot of community development and chamber committees. And for decades, we have talked about downtown revitalization. And here we are. We're on the cusp of this really exciting project. My understanding is that it's funded, and we might now, at the last minute, divert those funds for pavement improvements. And I do understand, the roads need attention. They absolutely do. I was disappointed that the tax didn't pass. I supported it. But I think it would be a big mistake, a big mistake, to divert those, the funds away from this exciting project for the roads. I really agree with the comments from Supervisor Lingenthaler and Mr. Waters, as well as the other advocates. I really feel like this project is only going to encourage and invite further development. I just feel like this project will return the value over time. I, I'm here to advocate, please don't scuttle the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barthlow. Mr. Stephen Redman?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for having this opportunity.
Sir, can you please pull the mic to you? Thank you.
Sorry. My name is Stephen Redman. I moved here in two thousand and eight. I worked for Chrysler at the Arizona Improving Grounds in product development. And, uh, I love downtown. I didn't always like downtown. In two thousand and eight, when I went down there, I was really disappointed what I saw. Very few businesses. I saw bail bondsman, I saw thrift shops, and it just was not inviting. The people that had been working downtown, buying buildings, fixing them up, starting their businesses, putting in their own money, and then a lot of the fundraisers to make murals, have the, the Hankley Walk. The people have been spending their own money trying to improve this, and it's working. It is getting a lot more traffic downtown. I'm seeing pictures from visitors all over the world with pictures of downtown. I was very excited to find out that we were going to do this, and I thought the funding was locked. And like the others, I was very disappointed that Prop four fifteen failed. I was all for it. The, the Kingman citizens had a chance to fund road repairs. They chose not to. I'm asking that you go forward with this project. This is not just beautification. This is about improving the roads downtown. This is about the sidewalks, ADA. It's about drainage, which, you know, you have a problem down there. And it's about making it pedestrian-friendly. And I, personally, I do like trees, because, as you know, we live in the desert. It's like a hundred in the summer with the sun beating down on you. People are just diving, trying to find shade. It would be nice to have some down there, to walk under. I've seen other downtowns, other communities have sunk the money into it, and they benefited. I've seen that. I, I am asking you to please do not scuttle this project. I've been, when I first moved here, in two thousand and ten, I went to my first city council meeting, and I heard about the previous plans that have been proposed. They funded plans for it, and then it failed for decades. It's time to move forward. It's time to make it presentable. I'd love to have pavers on the walkways. I'd love to have shade. I'd love to have this town shine. And I want to see pictures from visitors all over the world of the new downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redman. Mr. Joe Fellers?
Can you hear me? Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, my name is Joe Fellers. As a resident and employee of Blackbridge Brewery and a resident, excuse me, a resident of Kingman for twenty-five years, I speak for both myself and the downtown business I've been involved with for about ten years. I moved to Kingman in nineteen ninety-seven at sixteen years old. I've seen our downtown grow from a dilapidated, half-empty row of buildings to a vibrant, thriving business district. This has been the direct result of countless business and property owners' hard work, dedication, private money, and belief that downtown Kingman can be a destination for both locals and tourists. But we need more. We need help. Our downtown desperately needs this beautification infrastructure project to not only modernize and refresh our downtown, but also to create a comfortable and enjoyably walkable retail district. Spending this windfall of money on any other civic project would be a tragedy. Funding street maintenance and repair with only seven million dollars would be a Band-Aid at best, as Supervisor Lingenthaler said. We need a long-term solution. That solution would be our road to our, excuse me, the long-term solution to our roadway issues is absolutely tied to cultivating an atmosphere in downtown that will draw more locals and even more tourists to our city. It's necessary not only for our businesses, but for the survival of this town. And I implore you, please, do not scuttle this project. I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fellers. Ms. Donna Peterson?
Good evening. My name is Donna Peterson. I've been a resident of Kingman for over fifty years, and I love downtown Kingman. I tell everybody I can that it's like living in small-town USA, and we love it. When we first moved here, downtown Kingman was it. It was the hustling, blessed, uh, place to be. It, it met all of our needs in downtown Kingman. But then the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties came, and city council at that time decided that there needed to be more parking spaces for business. So the businesses moved out to Hilltop, and downtown started to deteriorate. I hope that all of you now realize how vital the downtown area is and that it's come alive again. There's lots of businesses downtown and activities, events, all the time. People that you talk to at these events tell you how much they love downtown Kingman. It's not just, um, the people who live downtown, but the whole town is, um, proud of downtown Kingman. But we do need the infrastructure to make it a safe, handicap-accessible in downtown we can take pride in. One point I'd like to make with you is when we have family and friends and tourists come to Kingman, and they say, "What is there to do in Kingman?" So we're going to say, "Well, let's take a drive. We'll go look at the potholes in the streets. They're looking really good right now." Or are we going to say, "Well, let's go downtown." Downtown is a wonderful place to be. There's businesses, there's places to go. It's a beautiful place. It has historic walks and things we can do. There's the tourist building here, and the locomotive park, and museums. All of these things make us proud of downtown Kingman. We hope that you will move ahead with this project and make downtown Kingman the heart of Kingman that we are proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. TJ Finn?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is TJ Finn. I'm an attorney at Community Legal Services here in Kingman. I've lived in Kingman for about ten years, bought a house downtown, invested in a business downtown, and, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak in favor of moving forward with the project. I want to start by commending this council and the previous council for the work that's already been done on it, the planning. Uh, I think the plan looks great. It addresses so many things that I think Beale Street needs. As Mayor Watkins said, it's definitely going to beautify Beale Street, but, but there's so much more to it in terms of safety, flood control, et cetera, et cetera. I must have signed up a little late because a bunch of people got here before me and made all the points that, that I was really eager to make, so, but, I won't belabor those points, but, uh, but I would like to reiterate that I think the city should spend the money from the American Rescue Plan or the American Rescue Act on this project, because that's a one-time influx of cash. It's not going to fix the, uh, the issues with the streets, which are an ongoing thing that need a permanent fix. And so, I think this, this, um, council should just go forward, and the, and the city should go forward with the plan for all the reasons that, that people have, have brought out. And I do want to let, uh, the council know that there are many more people in support of this. I circulated a petition online that gathered almost six hundred signatures that I forwarded to you all. It has, and the vast, vast majority of those are eight six four zero one and eight six four oh nine area codes, so they're Kingman residents, they're people that live here. There's a lot of great, uh, comments that they also put on the petition in favor of this project, and I forwarded that to you all. And I hope that you will, um, look at that also and, and stay the course on this project, because I think that downtown and Beale Street is really a gem that Kingman can, um, that can, you know, be the pride of Kingman for all the reasons that, that people have stated. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this, and I urge the council to, uh, go forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Mr. John Bennett? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Nancy Furville, Furville?
Good evening. My name's Nancy Furville, and I've been a resident for approximately fifteen years. I love downtown, like, as everybody said, but I also represent several local groups, including the Stroke Support Group and the Kingman chapter of, um, the Arizona Spinal Cord Association. And on behalf of these groups, we express our continued support of the improvement of the downtown infrastructure, continued beautification, but including especially the safety, accessibility of the downtown roads. The downtown infrastructure design project specifically promises to address the ADA improvements within the project. Our group of wheelchair users, including others with any physical, visual challenges, are counting on the completion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Furville. Mrs. Jan Swapp?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council members and staff. Thank you for your time tonight. I won't reiterate, but I will agree with what most of the people tonight have said. I come here in support of the downtown project, and I have loved what other people have said. There were just a couple of aspects that haven't been mentioned that I wanted to bring up today. My husband and I have lived in Kingman for 10 years. I consider us to be permanent residents. My in-laws have moved here, as has my family, and we will stay here. I serve on the Planning and Zoning Committee, and monthly we have projects that come up where people are interested in building or doing something downtown, and it usually has to do with making the downtown a better place to be, projects on abandoned lots. And they always come in with a dream and a hope and a belief that they'll be able to do it because of what they've seen happening recently downtown, the efforts that you've made and the efforts the other business owners have made. And this is a really good synergy that we have going, and I want to continue to support those people in the efforts that they're making, the hard work that they're, the hard work, the money and the dreams that they have. I would like to continue to support them in this effort. The other aspect that I wanted to address is that, is just from a medical care perspective. My husband is a physician at the hospital. He would not tell you this, but he's Mayo-trained, as are at least nine other physicians at this hospital. They provide excellent care to the residents of Kingman. This means that residents who would not otherwise afford or be able to travel to Flagstaff or Phoenix can get excellent care here. As some of you may know, it's very difficult to get a primary care appointment right now, and part of being able to recruit physicians and other high-quality members of the hospital has to do with what our city is looking like. Our most recent, my husband is on a recruiting committee and I help him with that, and the most recent recruit, the most recent people that we recruited were extremely excited about the theater and what's happening with the theater. So I just want to say from that aspect as well, this synergy also helps provide better medical care to all the residents of Kingman. Thank you for your time, and again, I really support this project.
Thank you, Mrs. Swapp. Ms. Julia Kowalska?
Good evening, Mayor Watkins, Vice Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all.
Can you pull the microphone up, please?
Oh, yeah, here we go. Can you hear me now? I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all in support of this downtown project. And like Sarah and TJ both said, I thank you for all the work that's been done and everything you do for our community. I'm a lifelong Kingmanite. I left for a time to get a college education and returned to raise my family here. I live downtown. I own a home downtown, and I patronize the businesses downtown. I'm also on the Board of Kingman Main Street, like many others in here, and I just want to express my support. Another commenter here said improvements to Beale Street would be nice, and I will assert that they are more than nice, they are necessary for accessibility, for safety and ADA compliance. The sidewalks on Beale Street are uneven. The curbs are crumbling. Repairs are necessary. I'll echo something Mrs. Swapp just said. I work for Kingman Regional Medical Center, and while I can't speak for the hospital on an official capacity, I can speak from experience. Like you do for the city, I hear and read public comments constantly about how we can improve our service. We get a lot of feedback about issues surrounding access to care, people whose primary care physicians have left, people who have to wait months to get an appointment. The truth is that Kingman is competing for doctors and other healthcare providers while a shortage of these professionals exists nationwide. We're competing with the nation. While I can point to many great features of our community, Kingman does fall short in certain amenities that might make our town more desirable to these professionals and their families. Our downtown area is full of unique businesses, including restaurants, breweries and boutiques owned and operated by our fellow citizens. These community members have worked hard to create an inviting and appealing space for locals and visitors alike. Further upgrades to this area will provide many benefits, and improved downtown district would attract new businesses, bring more tourism revenue to the city, and increase Kingman's appeal to a wider range of professionals who want to make this community home, just like we do. I appreciate your consideration and your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalska. Mr. Paul Gaines?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. In doing this research, I, on the City of Kingman website, and I just happened to notice that the landing page is this picture of our lovely downtown. I think it says a lot. If everybody hasn't seen our lovely downtown, we all know it's gorgeous. So it's obviously very apparent that the City of Kingman found it rather appropriate to have this be the first thing that people see when they go to the website. There really seems to be two issues at play here. The long game, in this case, desire to make necessary and wonderful improvements to an area even the city agrees to be a special place. And potholes, the ongoing short game. My father held a position for two terms in the Bedford, Texas City Council. After it was all over, he told me most of the complaints he received as a council member were all about potholes. That was the vast majority. After it was all over, excuse me, they eventually passed a financial package to address this problem, but even then, many people still complained. The point is, street maintenance and pothole abatement are here to stay. This project is all about the long game, and the City of Kingman has been playing the pothole short game for decades, just like most municipalities. This is about vision. We all have to be visionaries and play the long game and be productive to see projects like this through. And two final points. It's very obvious to me from reading and hearing some comments that some of the people who are against this project do not understand the scope of what the project is. And I believe it's the council's responsibility to convey the facts and apply the truth when possible and educate them. And finally, just to let everybody know here, our mobilizing efforts are not going to stop with just tonight, and we're not going to quit really until the first shovel hits the ground in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Ms. Andrea McGarrett?
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. I am a downtown business owner, and my husband is in the planning stages of his downtown building as well. We moved here about five years ago and fell in love with Kingman. I just want to first put a third on, from our perspective, having an attractive place to live and somewhere that people can go and enjoy has been huge for us being able to attract professionals and doctors in our own businesses, and so I just wanted to reiterate that point. And one thing I've noticed too, and as a lot of the detractors and people are speaking against this project, they seem to have a scarcity mindset, whereas people really need to be able to pick up their heads to look at what's possible and for creating more abundance in our community and creating more tax revenue because that's clearly what we need to have to propel our city forward. And just finally, just wanted to really reiterate the fact that the studies on these downtown projects say investing in our town is what's important, and it has huge upsides versus the initial expenditure. And we really need to be basing our decisions off of facts and strategic decision-making. And one of the most strategic locations in our city is the downtown corridor. So I appreciate you taking the time tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. I would encourage everyone, whether you're for or against this project, to go to the city website, and that's where you can find all the information about this project and what the city is proposing. I don't think there's any other city, any other council comments about this or questions we need to discuss? Huh? We did. We got through the list. We appreciate once again all your comment here tonight and all those who are here and taking part in government. That's probably the most important thing we can do as Americans. Hearing no other comments from council, can we have a motion then to approve?
I actually...
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
There may be others. But I have some comments and just some thoughts that I wanted to get out into the public. First of all, thank you for attending. I see just maybe two seats that don't have people. I will be looking, I would have loved this mobilization for Prop 415, but we'll maybe talk about that later. I have all your emails from everybody that sent me email communications, hence my tardiness because I was trying to read every last one of them before I got up here. So I do have a good perspective on both sides. Some of the comments though that came out and some of the things that I wanted to talk about was, we do need to create more revenue. We do need to fix our streets. So those are two things that sometimes are competing against each other. In this case, I think that tourism has been very underrated and understated in our community as to how important and what the numbers are. So when it gets down to the agenda where we're going to ask for council reports, that's going to be the next report that I ask for because we need to educate our population that we are becoming a tourist stop and we are working towards a tourist destination. So with more tourism comes more sales tax, and with more sales tax comes more revenue, and it just keeps circling. So I wanted to get that out there. We need to create more revenue. That definitely is a theme I hear out in the community, and we're going to be talking about that during the budget session as far as what we're going to do. This project is not the project to shelve. I've been in this community way too long, and I have never seen the capital investment that I have seen in downtown Kingman over the past few years. So I am so proud of the property owners that have stepped up, have done fundraising efforts. When I see comments that we should put pressure on the downtown business owners to start with their businesses and make more improvements, all they have to do is walk up and down that street. And all they have to do is if they've been here for a half a minute, know that they are doing that, and they've done all that they can do. So I have one more point here. I've also seen many projects since I've been here get this close and be shelved, and I do not want to see this one be shelved. Do I agree that we need our streets fixed? Absolutely. Is the council going to do something about that? They're going to do everything within their power. But this is not the project to sacrifice for a Band-Aid. And I've had many conversations with Manager Foggan about what $7 million would do to our streets, and it is a short-term fix. So I want to see in reports, I want to see tourism numbers, I want to see projected revenue, and I want to see the ROI on this project because the ROI is there and it will be there. We just have to give it some life. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Counselor Staley?
First, I want to thank everybody that's here tonight, whether you're for or against the project. It's just nice to see the community mobilize and come out and have your voices heard. I can't even tell you what that means to the council and how we make better decisions when you are speaking out. I had some notes to say about tonight, but I think so many of the speakers have already touched on the very important parts of investing in our town. I won't tell you how many years I have lived in Kingman, but I'll tell you it's long enough that I remember shopping at Babbitt's with my grandmother when I was a little girl. And if you've lived here long enough, you remember what a great store that was, and JCPenney's was downtown and the downtown was full of life. And then I also can remember the dark days when things were boarded up and shops were empty, and now it's coming back. Just today, I learned about a new retail shop that's opening up on Beale Street, and it's a lot of young people. You know, it's a lot of young people, young entrepreneurs, who are spending every penny they have to bring retail to Kingman, and that's how our city is mostly funded, is by retail. Also, you know, I don't want to make this a generational thing. Certainly, we've heard from all kinds of people, but younger people, people younger than I am, are really looking for something different. They're not looking for the malls, they're not looking for suburbia. What we have on Stockton Hill is not appealing. It is about having a vibrant downtown where you can spend your entire day, and that's what will attract these doctors so that we don't have to wait six months to get in to see a specialist. It's what will attract more professionals, more accountants, even more lawyers, you know, all these things that we need in town. And it's important because what I've also experienced over the years is a lot of very talented young people coming to town, and they spend a few years here because they think we have so much to offer and we are just, I hear this all the time, we're right on the cusp of something great, and they're just waiting for it to happen because they know we have this potential. And then four or five years later, they move away because they realize, like Travis had said, the city continues to shoot itself in the foot and we don't take these big investments and make things happen in town. We start, we get scared and we get shortsighted and we just talk about, well, let's just fix the potholes. And that's my other comment, is that about the potholes and the streets. The city, the council, has designated $10 million in this fiscal budget for pavement preservation, and as I understand it, we've only spent about a tenth of that budget so far, and that starts July 1 through June. So I know that we can expect some real important projects to start happening here in the next few months when it warms up. So while you haven't seen those through the winter and especially when it was raining during monsoon season, they are coming. And I think that's the real point, is that you can have both. We can spend money on streets, on pavement preservation, and we can spend money on these street projects that will not only make our downtown ADA accessible, because I don't think anyone's against that. I mean, everybody should be able to access these businesses. There are laws for that. The city, it's in our code. We make businesses, you know, improve their properties or build their properties according to ADA, and here we are, our own streets aren't ADA-accessible. So all of these things are important, and this council, this city, is capable of doing more than one thing at a time. We can invest in streets. We will continue to put as much into them as we can without the additional funding, but we can also address the issues on Beale Street and invest in tourism, and it's not just about the tourism. It's about us too, having this place that we can all be proud of. I love downtown. My grandparents moved here in the 50s and they lived on Beale Street. That was their first home. And so I've always been dedicated to helping downtown revitalization, and I hope that the town can come together and find this compromise, and we can all support it. Those are my comments. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Yes, Counselor Smiley?
I've listened to everything. I've read the emails. My emails on this subject were probably about 50/50. And the only point that I would make, I love downtown. I appreciate the people that came to speak. But when you talk about spending $10 million on the streets and you're going to spend $7 million on six blocks, and the streets downtown are already better than any of the streets in the neighborhoods, people don't understand it. And we can't continue to kick the can down red. At some point, we've got to address the streets more than just potholes. And until we do that, there's always going to be a question of whether or not we've done the right thing. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mayor Watkins?
Yes, Counselor Pat?
Thank you. I love the downtown area too. It's quite incredible when you come in from US 93 or Highway 40, and the first thing you see is a great sign that says Kingman, and it becomes warm and welcoming, and the shops and the bar hopping is incredible too. I got my undergrad at San Diego State University, and I spent a lot of time in San Diego throughout the city there. I went to downtown quite a bit because that was actually the place to be. It was very happening. But the reason I went there was because of the businesses and the... and the stores that they had, whether it be fine dining, good bars, or clubs, entertainment, good nightlife, live music, shops. I didn't go there for the sidewalk. I didn't go there for some landscaping or streetscaping. I went there because of the culture and the environment. I want to see downtown thrive just as much as anybody else does. I want to see it revitalize and beautiful as well. But the reality is, is that we need to prioritize, because we're on a budget, and a budget that we have to balance. We have to have an order of operation, and the people of Kingman, the residents of Kingman continually demand that we fix our roads. Our infrastructure is deteriorating, and our roads are the blood supply and lifeline of the city. If they continue to fail, I think that the city will continue to fail. And it becomes a disservice to many of our residents who have to drive over these potholes, incurring the additional wear and tear to their own vehicles, messing up their alignment, making them so that they have to order new tires sooner, or even get blown-out tires and have to replace their tires altogether. There's always an opportunity cost. As much as I would like to see this project move forward, I just don't believe the time is now. And I'll leave with one last analogy. I imagine that the city's like a vehicle, and we need a well-oiled and well-running vehicle. Right now, we don't have an engine, and maybe our tires are shot. We shouldn't be spending our money giving it a facelift or a paint job at the expense of replacing the engine or putting on those new tires to actually get to where we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pat.
Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Walker, and I figure Mr. Savage, you'd like to have something, too.
I'd like to add to this. I'm impressed with the turnout. I think this is the fullest we've seen this room in a couple of years. I personally have done my homework. I've looked at this project. I think it's a great project. It is. It'll revitalize downtown. But how much of this project do we really need? We know for a fact we have ADA issues. We know we have drainage issues. And we have street issues for maintenance. I think our biggest problem we have right now, that we as a council, it would be irresponsible for us to fund this project right now, the way it sits, the way it's going to be coming to us soon, what we're hearing, the $7 million range. It would be irresponsible for us to vote on this anytime soon until we know we have a program, and we keep hearing we have a program coming for asphalt preservation. Let's get that in front of us first. And then we can come back to this, is my plan. But I would expect that asphalt preservation program to be to us soon, next month or so, and then we can come back and revisit this. Because I mean, looking at it, I've talked with some of the guys that helped design it. I got their input on it. And it started with ADA and drainage. So regardless, we have that to look at on this project, even if we strip it down. But stripping it down, is that what we want to do? I mean, I don't know. I don't know what the council thinks. But we got to look at it. We got to look at our main asset first, which is roads and infrastructure, existing roads and infrastructure. And that's my thought. I'd like to look at the asphalt preservation before we even come back to this thing.
Thank you, Counselor Walker. Mayor Walker, thank you. Counselor Savage.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. A lot of passion in this room, and personally, myself, I have struggled with this myself. I grew up here, and as Jamie said, Cherish has been here, Keith has been here. We've seen that downtown go up and down, and up and down, and up and down. So I did some soul searching, and thought what other areas of downtowns have been important to me and attract people to. And we are a tourist destination place. If you go to Flagstaff, they got a wonderful downtown. People go to Williams, they have a wonderful downtown. We do have a wonderful downtown. But I also agree with Councilman Walker about piecing this possibly. Get the necessities in first, and then we'll look at the future going from that point. So I'm behind it, just not full board right now. But you guys were awesome. You all did great presentations tonight, and it kind of tickled my heart. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Savage. As a reminder, on Item G, this is just to pay for the work that has already been done. So we need a motion to carry, to approve Item G on the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Once again, citizens, thank you for all being here and voicing your opinions and concerns, and we appreciate your participation in government. Moving on, we have Item Number Four, Old Business. We don't have any. Item Number Five, we don't have any new business. Take five. Okay.
Mayor, if you want to remind everybody, we're still in a meeting, and they need to exit if they wish to talk.
Okay. Yes.
Just order a five-minute recess.
Do you want me to pound the gavel? Just as a reminder, we have the meeting to finish. If we could ask you to quietly exit and discuss this out in the hall. Thank you. Yes, go ahead. Let's do a five-minute recess. Feels good to stand. Let's go ahead and get started again. I'm sure Counselor Pat will be here shortly. Item Number Six, Department Reports. 6A Kingman Fire Department, 2022 Annual Report. Chief Jaeger, welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, thanks for having me tonight. I will try and move this along, but certainly I don't want to miss anything because we are proud of what we've done this year. So the steam kind of got out of me a little bit because I thought the crowd was here for me, and then everybody left. So it deflated me a little bit. But we'll get through it. I'll be all right.
Yeah, Chief, I could have asked them to stay for you.
So as stated, this is our 2022 Annual Report, if I can figure it out now to you. Are they going to have to advance it? Well, we'll start there before I try it. The submission statement and the values of the organization. I did make you a copy of this presentation. So again, some of this I won't spend much time on as we move through, because there is quite a bit. The Kingman Fire Department services 37-point square miles within the city of Kingman. Again, that's just the city limits. However, we do provide service as well to the mutual aid partners we have to the northeast, south, and west of us, as well as some automatic aid areas that we cover on Highway 93. As we come into town on Gasoline Alley, what we call Gasoline Alley, we do auto aid areas there, and as well north out toward the district. When you get around Gordon, there's some auto aid areas there. The population, the city population, the number I got from Annie was 35,000. But again, we know those numbers are upwards in the 60s of the population that come in every day. We are ISO 1, and we are still accredited. And then the dispatch center is CLIA accredited as well. Current sworn personnel are 55. We are down four positions right now. We're in recruitment to fill those, and those are due to folks moving elsewhere. And then number of civilian personnels is 27. Number of fire stations, four. And then the number of training centers, one. To the right on your handout, I indicated the current vehicle fleet that we have. Next, it'll be your organizational chart. That shows every position within our organization as far as management, and who's responsible for what. Areas of service. Our primary, obviously, emergency service center is our foundation of our department. That's fire suppression, emergency medical services, technical rescue, fire prevention, wildland, public fire and EMS, safety education, hazardous materials mitigation, fire investigations, and then domestic preparedness, planning, and response. Ancillary services, 911 dispatch, permitting, community education, injury prevention, fire inspection, code enforcement, professional development, training, recruitment, supplying equipment, maintenance, research, development, and then this year, our unmanned aircraft system, or the drones. Here's our emergency response for 2022. 74, excuse me, 7,413 EMS, 1,544 fire calls, 84 hazmat, six tech rescues, 41 building life safety calls, and then 14 other that's just not classified, so it doesn't go in one of those specific slots. So annual year-to-date, we were actually a little bit slower this year. 9,100 calls versus 9,268 last year. That is just call volume, is all that that is. And then I did include some additional years prior to that, so you can see. We're still growing, obviously, still a lot of calls. It's just this year, we were down 100 calls. Also, keep in mind in 2021, those were our prime COVID year for us for response. I did break down to show you the time of day, when we're busiest. Ours are Mondays and Wednesdays seem to be our busiest days. The weekends are a little bit slower, which is nice for us, because the majority of our staffing is here during the week. They're not off on weekends, so that works out in our favor. The other is time slots. Our busiest time basically is during the day, 6:00 AM to roughly 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock at night. We monitor these time blocks when we staff our squads for medical response. That's why we currently staff 7:00 to 7:00, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM with our squad. That relieves call volume and call load off our engines, our fire trucks, which keeps them in the station. So we do monitor this. Operations, that's the biggest component of our organization. That's the fire trucks and the guys responding, guys and gals responding to calls. Certainly, some of the incidents that we deal with. And then that also is the hazardous materials technicians. We have 17 current certified hazardous materials technicians. We do have three going to hazmat tech class in Pueblo, Colorado next month. They'll be certified, and so we'll actually end up with 20. And then our goal, we were able, which I'll talk about when I get into grants, we got a three-year-funded grant to send folks every year. So... We currently have five FAA Part 107 certified commercial drone pilots. I just like saying that. They're drone pilots, but they are FAA certified. We have five on staff. We have six going through training right now. We had five, and then we recruited another one, which you'll see in the picture as we get going. This is a visual of what we use the drones for. This is on a structured fire. We fly the incident scene. Another view, the battalion chief can see this in his vehicle, so he can see where his engines are placed. We've actually used them infrared to locate hotspots and addicts that we thought were out. And so it's been very beneficial. Two weeks ago, if you read the article in the paper and on social media, we did have a successful rescue. Two 80-year-old tourists that were hiking the trail got disoriented and lost, and we were called, and we located them within 20 minutes. And we work real close with search and rescue, so we are excited. Again, we are recruiting individuals within our organization to be pilots. We have a pretty good list already. They want to do that job. And then they also, some individuals just come out of the woodwork. They self-volunteer for the program. So this was actually at our city fair that we did, and we had our setup there, and we were showing the city manager what our capabilities were, so.
You can tell that by the Diet Coke that's sitting on the end there.
Yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't miss that. But no, we're very proud of our drone program and successful missions that we've been running. The operations also falls into our technical rescue. We currently have 16 certified technicians. When I say technicians, these are confined space, high-angle, low-angle rope rescue, anything that's technical, extrication, all of that. We have 16 that are at that level. We will have another eight this next year go through that program as well, and so we'll end up with more. We have the Heavy Rescue Unit 215, which is actually stationed right down below at Station 21. And then certainly, our training division, that is probably the busiest of all our divisions within the organization. And you can see by training hours, this year, this last year of 2022, we just shined in training. We were able to, again, we went from 30, 26,000 the year before. Again, 2021 was COVID years. We couldn't have the hands-on meeting trainings that we were able to do. We still accomplished a lot, but this year, we were able to get in a lot of hands-on training as well. One of the areas we really exceeded in training this year was our communication center training, because now we're not just doing the firefighter training. We're doing a lot of employee development, officer development, supervisor classes that we were not doing that heavily in the past. But due, just due to retirements and obviously promotions, this, we promoted everybody in the organization, every position last year, so we really had to focus on employee development. And so that's why you're seeing a huge increase in those numbers. Again, the top certifications that our folks have or hold are advanced cardiac life support. We're very special to have pediatric advanced life support paramedics. That is huge. And then certainly the hazardous materials, technical rescue, and then swift water rescue. Every firefighter, all the way up to chief officers in our organization are certified in swift water rescue. We were able to purchase over the last few years all the equipment for the engines, so every vehicle is equipped to perform a swift water rescue, including the chief's vehicles. They have PFDs, our flotation jackets, helmets, rope bags that we could throw because we do have significant swift water opportunities in town. So we trained, we trained everybody at that level as soon as they get hired by us, they go through that training. Some of the trainings we perform, obviously, the live fire propane courses. We're one of the industry leaders in that training because obviously our history in our organization and with the city, with the Blevy, so we train hard on that. We do have an out, a lot of outside folks come here just for that training, which we're pretty proud of. Some of the operations divisions accomplishments for this last year, we obviously were, we were super excited. Ladder two thirty-four was placed in service. TRT ropes, one, two, and three certifications. We were able to get eight personnel through that and get them certified. We did a mass casualty training drill with KRM C and outside agencies. It's been many, many years since that was accomplished and done, and we were able to do that this last year. That was in hands-on mass casualty incident that we worked with them on. Same thing with BNSF, Amtrak, and then the National Guard, ninety-first CST hazmat team actually came here and we did joint training with them, which was huge for our hazmat team to be able to do that. We implemented the drone program, and then we had four graduates from the first Arizona Fire Chief Association Chief Executive Officer Program. We had our four chief officers and then DM and Cloud, our dispatch supervisor, completed that program. So we're, we were very proud of them for that. And we had one graduate from the National Fire Academy Managing Fire Officer Program. That was Battalion Chief Tanner Miller. So again, great accomplishments for our executive staff and then the line guides as well. Community risk reduction, they're, again, they're super busy. These calls, some of these calls, we did increase, or excuse me, the things they provided, we did increase quite a bit this year, and I won't go through every, every one of those. Some of the things we do, fire extinguisher training, again, this, this picture is the new fire extinguisher prop that we got off a grant. So we were able to do a lot more effective fire extinguisher training to all the businesses in our community. We do all of our businesses as well as all the businesses at the airport. Our annual fire extinguisher training, this is a new state-of-the-art machine. It was purchased on a grant. And it accomplishes that a lot safer for the people taking the course as well as us. Not like the old days when we had to burn the barrel of oil. This is propane-fired and it's a lot cleaner and safer. And then certainly we do this year, our staff, fire station tours, that's, that's a big part of what we do. And then one of the programs we're extremely proud of is the Kingman Fire Explorers. These are high school kids. This year we have thirteen in the group. I actually went to their training today. I periodically just drop in to see how they're doing, and they're still just as excited. And again, we use this as a recruitment tool. We, they are trained, by the time they get done with their one year of school, they will be firefighter one and two certified. We were able to obtain funding for that. It's all funded, doesn't cost the city a thing. And then we also got their EMT class included as well. So technically, they go through our program, go through the EMT class, they can be hired immediately as we move forward. CPR training, that is probably the biggest thing that our CR, Community Risk Reduction Staff does, is CPR training. We do everything, and let me go to the next one. From BLS, HeartSaver, AED, Friends and Family, there's so many programs that we do. And you can see in this slide, the certifications that we issued for the year. It's just our numbers keep increasing and increasing and increasing, which, which helps us with our survivability rate of our citizens. Some of their big accomplishments this year was we became an American Heart Association Training Site, which is huge for, for the city. Now we are a training site. We train. We don't have to go through the college. We don't have to go through the hospital. We don't have to go through anybody. We are a training site. So we schedule, train, we have full certified staff to teach these courses. So we'll be doing more and more of those, as well as the daily stuff that we continue doing with free car seats. We're able to obtain grants for that, so we provide free car seats, and we do quite a few of those a year. Nine-one-one Center. I gave you a copy or showed, provided a copy of the eight agencies that we dispatched for, their call volumes. You can see everybody's going up and everybody's busy. We did just complete last week the review for accreditation at dispatch. Midway through the cycle, so we're at two-year, they do a review to see how you're doing, if you need to change, correct anything, and we got a clean mark that everything looks fantastic moving forward. So our staff down there did a great job. We're, we're excited for them. Some of their accomplishments this, this last year was the implementation of the Emergency Fire Dispatch. We did the emergency EMS dispatch. Now we went to fire. It speeds up the process. It asks specific questions. It's a program that they use to, in their call-taking process. The implementation of the NG nine-one-one, in bold, I just typed that. It's, it's the integrated text and smart transcription to dispatch, so you can text. We can get, receive text. That was new to us this last year. So when we upgraded our nine-one-one system, we were able to upgrade that, as well as we upgraded all new consoles and infrastructure at nine-one-one. Still some things we're working on down there, but very good progress down there. We implemented a quality assurance and quality improvement model for all the EMS and fire calls that come in, all the complaints that you occasionally, not all of them. You do get complaints, obviously, you're not, the big one is you didn't get here quick enough. But we do have a process now and a committee that actually, we randomly pull calls and review them and evaluate them to make sure that we're meeting our standards. So that was implemented. Like I said, the big thing earlier for us was training. This last year, we did three hundred and eighteen hours of leadership training. Our goal was twelve, and we did an actual twenty-nine per employee, so we exceeded our goal. The overall training hours, we did two thousand three hundred and thirty. Our goal was sixty per employee, and we were able to accomplish two hundred and eleven. So we worked really hard to increase our training hours, not just at dispatch, but also at community development with our inspectors and also our fire. So again, we really focused on employee development, law enforcement, communications, call-taking, dispatching. They did also participate in our exercises and drills that we do. That has not been a normal practice until now, because they need training as well when the big event happens, so. And then we implemented the task book process fully across our organization to where if you're a new employee, you get a task book and you get a mentor, and you are guided through your process to get you up to the level as a new hire. So when your one-year probationary period comes through, you should be fully accomplished and meet those requirements. Community development, that's downstairs, planning and zoning. I did include a few graphs in here for you as far as permits issued. You can see our permits issued increased quite a bit, but it's for the most part pretty consistent with 2021 as well. We did go up a little bit in that as far as values as well. Some of their accomplishments at community development for 2022. Their commercial permit procedure incorporating, combining community development and engineering process into one to make it simpler and easier and more effective and basically save time for developers and anybody that's applying for permits. We wanted a one-stop shop. They come in, they get all their questions answered, so we can move those processes through. Same thing with the subdivision process incorporating both community development and engineering. It's getting all those divisions at the table all at once, so we're all talking, so we're not having to have three and four meetings. We have one. And that's some of the things that we're really working on. All residential level plans are accepted electronic now, which as a contractor is huge in saving time, as well as the review process timelines. It shortens that down, makes, makes it quicker for those processes. And we don't have to store boxes and boxes and boxes of plants. We, they completed the commercial industrial vacant land analysis. And then we have began, I'm not sure how far along they are, but the central square permitting software upgrade. That's a big permit software upgrade program that, that they were going to implement this year, but we started it a little bit last year. So some of the fire department accomplishments overall, we achieved our reaccreditation through CPSE. That was a big deal for us and for the city. We completed our 2022 strategic plan review and update. That's, that'll be out and published hopefully this week. The, we also completed our 2023 KFD Annual Training Plan. That is every, that is our training document. That is everything that we do for the year. We received a automated external defibrillator grant for the city that was sponsored through Mark Kelly, and that is a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. The fire department can't take full credit for that. City staff as well assisted in that project. That should be coming in shortly. We were just notified we were awarded. That is a citywide AED program is what that's gonna be. So you'll have AEDs at your parks, at your churches, at facilities that currently do not have those. But again, I want to thank the, a big chunk of that goes to the finance team and their grant writer to help us with that. So we are fortunate as a city to receive that grant. We received the hazardous materials education grant for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. That's from the Arizona Department of Emergency Management. That's a three-year cycle grant for training. So again, like I said, we're sending texts to Pueblo to be trained. They'll be trained, come back certified, ready to go to work, and we will have no investment financially in that at all. It's paid for by the grant. So we're excited about that. And then the hazmat technician course by ADM, that was an additional twenty thousand dollars. So we get twenty thousand this year, and then the other grant covers the next two cycles as well as additional hazmat classes that we do for all the employees. And then we received the Walmart community grant of a thousand dollars, and we'll be receiving that shortly as well. So with that.
Thank you, Chief. Please, first and most importantly, convey our thanks and appreciation to everybody in your department for the job well done and working safely and doing all that they can and do for the city. We truly appreciate that. I am impressed also by the training hours, your goal that you had and what you accomplished. That's huge. So once again, we appreciate all the work well done. Counsel?
I have some questions.
Counselor Vice Mayor.
You know I'm gonna have questions. Hi, Chief. Thanks for the presentation, and thank you again. I echo what the mayor says. I just have a few questions. You have one med squad unit for, I see that you went on seven thousand four hundred thirteen EMS calls. I know when I did the ride-along at Station Two, that was the majority of the calls, which is reflected in your report. I am curious, are, is that a part-time crew? Are there any plans to work it into a full-time position with the extensive call volume that you have for EMS?
So we currently have one full-time position every day. A firefighter EMT is, is to cover the squad. We staff the paramedic position on it with civilians. Those, that's the part-time, part-time folks. We're staffed roughly around seventy percent of the time. So when we have a part-time employee that wants to work that day, then, then we take that firefighter and he's assigned to the squad. If we don't have part-time that day, then he's assigned to the engine. So obviously, the more we can staff that, the better, because it does reduce mileage, wear and tear of fuel. I get quicker responses. It's just, and it keeps the big red trucks in the stations to when they're needed, they're needed for fires. So it is hugely beneficial, obviously, with anything. I would love to tell you, yes, my ultimate goal, I'd love to staff one in every fire station. But again, we, we all know that it takes money to do that, and we have to be fiscally responsible, and there's just some things we can't do. But we are doing our best by utilizing part-time help. And then certainly when we have those people available, we, we work them, and they work the squad.
Okay, I appreciate that. Taskbook, you had mentioned you have a taskbook for new hires. Do you also have a taskbook internally for those that may have been, you know, they may have been like three years, five years? Do they know what they need to do to get to the next?
So they, yeah, they don't have taskbooks. Taskbooks, taskbooks are generated for that employee development of a new employee for their probationary period. However, we do have, we do have qualification lists or courses that you, every employee knows what it takes to get to the next level, and it's identified in our annual training plan. So if you want to go from firefighter to an engineer, you need these courses. If you want to go from an engineer to captain, you need these courses, and it goes all the way up to fire chief. So you can obtain that. We don't, we do require certain trainings too. So if you do want to promote, it's mandatory, you have to take an officer development course that we teach internally. And then if you want to promote to other, other levels in the organization, there are courses that you have to do that are mandatory to be able to promote.
But it's clearly defined?
Clearly defined. Every individual in the organization knows what, if they want my job, it's outlined how they can get here.
Okay, all right, perfect. And then you mentioned for community development services, the one-stop shop where I, I love that, and we've needed that forever. So when you bring someone in and they need to meet with engineering and they need to meet with all these, they need to meet with, you know, all the different departments, how often do all the departments show up? Like, is, is it, is it something that if, if some, if I were to come to you with a project and you said, yeah, we need to get all these departments together? And I ask this because I've had some people in my ear. So the question is, is it a meeting where everybody is encouraged? Is it, you know, come if you want to?
Obviously, it depends on the circumstance and what the, what it, what that specific issue is. But when we usually set, if it's, and Sean can speak a lot more on this than me, but if someone comes in and it takes all of us getting at the table, we set meetings. I set one today with engineering. That's the fire code, Sean's department, mine, that we, we're gonna meet tomorrow because there's an issue that we have to address. And so we've, every city department works very well together. If one of us calls a meeting and our name is on that list, we make sure that we're there. There's, there's never been any issues. Now, obviously, we started today. We were gonna meet today and it just didn't happen because of schedules. But we've never had that problem of not getting together when we needed to get together.
Because it's, it should be a seamless process, you know? You do that one-stop shop and you, and you coordinate all those departments, so the individual, the customer sits down one time and gets all their information, and everybody's at the table and has their input. So it's, it's hugely important, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that.
I think the biggest thing is the communications within the departments. Now it's real easy for a customer to come in the door and go through the process of pulling their permit. They're given all the information they need because all the department heads and then also the managers all speak to each other daily on the, on the issues and on the things that need to be worked on. So, so there's really good communication within the organization.
All right, perfect. And then finally, on the CPSE accreditation, congratulations, by the way. How, how often are you reaccredited, and is there an evaluation in between reaccreditations?
So on the fire side, it's every five years, and there is not. But we do have quarterly reports and annual reports that we submit. So they don't do the onsite like dispatch went through where they really come out and do kind of a review. the onsite, like dispatch went through, where they really come out and do kind of a review before the main review. We have to send in our quarterly documents and then also our annual documents and data that we collect. We have to send that in.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Counselor Walker.
I also would like to thank you and your staff for all your hard work. Appreciate it. And then my question, Vice Mayor's family asked it, basically. My question was, as your medical team, are we in need to add another team to help out? I know you said you'd love to, but it's funding.
Well, I say I'd love to, because I'm like any fire chief, the more people that I can get, the better. But I'm currently working with city staff during the budget process to determine what our needs are.
In the fire station waiting for the call they really need to be on, instead of us wearing out our fire trucks. So it makes more sense sending that SUV with the medical team.
But we also gotta pay attention to call volumes, time of day, you know, because we certainly don't need folks standing around either, and have too many. And we gotta look at our numbers. We look at our performance measurements and our data, because we have national standards that we meet, and international standards, because we're accredited, and we try and meet those numbers as we go forward. And again, it's constantly evaluated. I'd love to tell you, I want 20 more firemen, but it's not fiscally responsible to make those statements without the planning, the data, and to sit down and go through the processes.
Well, I think that's a great program, and I'm glad you guys are pushing it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Savage.
Great presentation, Mr. Jaeger.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. One is about the AEDs.
AEDs?
Yeah, the DFIBs. If there's a facility that has a bunch of seniors in it, is there a way they go about a grant to get one, or who decides who gets what?
So the grant guidance from the grant that we're getting is gonna give us guidance on how we can use them, where they can go, all of that. And so I would have to defer that to the, that grant committee that was working on that.
Any anticipation?
But certainly, we wanna try, anytime we put out public AEDs, we obviously want to look at the most populated areas that we can, that we're gonna have those type of calls in. So we are looking at the churches, we're looking at some of the halls that we have in town and some of that stuff. So again, it'll go to the committee to decide ultimately where they're placed.
And when do you anticipate that?
It's all based on when we get the funds, and then we have to order them and all that. So again, we were just notified, so I'm, I don't know if Manager Fogg knows any more than I do, but I'd say we're probably at least six months or more out.
Yeah, Carl's gonna do a course correction. We're very, we're getting off the report and doing a lot of comments that aren't covered on the agenda, so.
Apparently, I just said it, so.
Okay. Counselor Saley.
I don't care what Cooper says, I have questions. First, I want to thank you for everything you do and your report tonight. I'm surprised to hear you do get complaints. All I ever hear are praises for the fire department out in the public. We all think you're really great, so thank you for that. It's a source of pride for our community. And I also hear good things about the one-stop shop as well. Years ago, we sat down and made it a priority that it would be easy to build something here, because we really, we understand the importance of bringing in commercial and retail and what that means to our economy. I am wondering, though, is the building department closed on Fridays? Can you submit plans or get a permit on a Friday? Sean?
I know we do have inspectors that work on Fridays.
And the inspectors do work on Fridays, that's part of it.
We are accomplishing inspections and all that, so.
The actual office itself is closed on Fridays. We work the, what the rest of the city does Monday through Thursday for tins, but we do have an inspector assigned on Fridays to handle inspections, so that construction projects are not delayed.
Okay, so the inspection part isn't being held up, but somebody that needs to come in and submit their plans or something like that, is there a chance that we could get some staff to change that? Because I know, you know, that's hard on the construction community.
Be happy to discuss that at a further, at another council meeting.
We're really diverging off of what the report asks. This would be better.
But it's part of the report, because it's the building department, so.
Better addressed at another meeting.
I'm just putting out there that, thank you for everything you do. We would like to see the department open on Fridays, so that we continue to be business-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors Ward or Pat? Okay. Great. Chief, once again, appreciate your report. Thank you. Item 6B, industrial park retention and expansion survey. Gary, welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure this evening to have Bennett Bradley, our Economic Development Manager for the city of Kingman, and then a gentleman named Ryan Jones. He's an economist with the Economic Development Center at Yavapai College. And so what the economic development team has been working on for the last several months are two things. Number one is the industrial park airport impact analysis report, and Ryan's gonna give you that first. It's gonna be rather short, but it'll really show you what the impact of that facilities and those facilities are on this community. And then Bennett is going to do the business and retention and expansion report. And this was a survey that took place with individual visits to the industries at the airport. So just something to keep in mind, the Kingman Airport and Industrial Park is within a day's drive of like 34 million people. And if you didn't know, it's the largest park, industrial park outside of Metro Phoenix. So we really have something going for us there. Both these reports are gonna show how important the park is, certainly to the city of Kingman and Mojave County, and in the same time, it enhances our goals to work with the industries out there as they develop their business plans. So with that, Ryan, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and he's gonna join us via Zoom, and it's all yours, sir.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm going to share my screen with the presentation. Hopefully, this works. And I'm sorry I can't be with you guys today. I am in Prescott, and just a bit too far of a drive, but. So anyway, my name is Ryan Jones. Can you, I'm getting an error that Zoom is quitting. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but we cannot see your presentation. Bennett, can we run the presentation from our side and just, he can tell us when to advance?
Ryan, can you hear us?
He's muted currently.
Okay. So can we pull up his presentation from our side, and we'll just run it through?
I'm here. I'm so sorry. I do not know if it's my end or what, but.
We have it pulled up on our side, so you just tell us when you want it advanced.
Okay, perfect. So I'm sorry I can't be with you. I'm here in Prescott, Arizona. Hello to Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Ryan Jones. I am an economist with the Regional Economic Development Center at Yavapai College. We call it the R E D C. So I'm going to fly through this presentation, but I urge you to take a look at the report. It has some very interesting details, and it really shows how important the Kingman Municipal Airport and Industrial Park is to the area and to the wider Arizona. So for those of you who don't deal with impact reports, impact studies very often, what is it? So what it is, is it measures the contribution of the facility to the region and the broader Arizona economy. So our goal is to provide a full and credible assessment of the total economic and employment impact of one of the largest employment centers in northern Arizona. So how do we do this? You can go on slide two or three now. We use the most widely accepted methodology for measuring economic impacts of economic sectors, which is called the I O model, the input-output model. And it's basically a table of records of the flow of resources to and from companies, organizations, and individuals within a region at a given time. So the tool that we use to do this, it used to be done all on paper, hundreds of pages of spreadsheets, but the tool we use now is called IMPLAN, and it's basically the gold standard in terms of planning and impact analysis software. And so on the third, if you go one more slide. So basically, what it does is we input the direct effect of each of the companies that operate in the facility, Industrial Park and Municipal Airport. That being the employment that each of them has, and then the composition of the companies based on their industry sector.
Brian's dealing with intermittent internet.
So we'll just keep going on this. So basically, we looked at 82 businesses in the park as part of this model. They consisted of 2,673 employees, and those businesses and those jobs supported an additional 3,604 jobs. So the total economic impact from this was $751 million into the Kingman area.
Okay, so, sorry, I don't know what's happening. This hasn't happened before. Could be the snow effect, but I apologize. To cut to the chase, what is the economic impact of the Kingman Municipal Airport and Industrial Park? Essentially, there are about 80 businesses operating within, and there are about 2,700 employees, which equates to, since there are some part-time, it equates to about 2,500 full-time equivalent employees. That results in an additional 3,604 total, or sorry, a total job-supported figure of 3,604, and a total economic impact of 751 million. So what is this comprised of? The direct impact is 565 million, so this is what companies take in terms of revenue. It's also comprised of labor income of 135 million of direct impacts of what companies are paying their employees. The indirect impact, which is resulting from companies spending their money to buy from local suppliers, is 102 million, and results in 584 jobs. And then the induced impact is a result of employees of the Kingman Municipal Airport and Industrial Park companies, their wages, what the result is of their spending their wages in the local economy, so wider Arizona. That results in 84 million of impact and 527 jobs. So if we add those all together, the total impact is 751 million and 3,604 jobs. So keeping it short, I do want to note that the employment magnifier, this is basically showing what the effect of one job is. One job created in the industrial park is on the wider economy. So basically, every two employees generates or supports another job within the wider Arizona economy, more than likely closer to the Kingman region. And 1.4 is extremely high. This is, you know, I do this kind of work quite often, and 1.4 as a multiplier is quite impressive. Normally, for a retail job, it's 1.1 at a max, or food service, it's right around 1.1. But the importance of these jobs in the facility are such that they just have a much higher magnified effect. And again, I apologize for the technical difficulties. If anyone has any questions, feel free to follow up via email, phone, or I'll hang on here as long as I can.
All right, I appreciate that, Ryan. If you guys don't mind, we can hold the questions pertaining to that report, as well as what I'm gonna go over here. And if I pull that up on here, or? You make it larger. You know what, it's not that. Yes, it is. How do you make it larger? All right. So we started working on this in 2022. The, basically, our objective, when we go out and we talk to these industries, is to demonstrate the city's pro-business attitude that we have, and that goes back to what you guys were discussing earlier about the one-stop stop. You know, out at the industrial park, we do the same thing with the county. When projects come through, they meet with the county representatives, as well as, we're there at the table, and all the city departments, the water department, because they handle water out there, as well as the sewer. So when projects come through, it's the same concept. So we look to build on developing communications with these local businesses, obtain their opinions and satisfaction level with the city, identify business needs and concerns that may be addressed by the city, and identify their future outlook, identify the opportunity to provide training, and develop strategies and action that will continue to support the economic development. So what we did is we met with 25 companies, and those 25 companies employ roughly 600 employees. And like I said, the interviews took place over a five- to six-month period. What I'm gonna do is go through some of the questions that we went through in the report. The report's pretty extensive, and you guys have a copy of that. We're also gonna upload a copy to our website. So we're gonna hit on a few of those questions, and then we're gonna go into the recommendations and findings. So company background, the largest business sectors were miscellaneous manufacturing and durable goods producers and metal production. Company ownership, both the largest, or both publicly traded and private companies find their residence out at the industrial park. Each structure of a company comes with its own benefits to our community. For instance, private companies tend to develop great community relationships, and they can also make location decisions quickly. So most of the companies that operate out in the industrial park have been established for over a decade. It's pretty impressive. We've had, of the companies that we interviewed, five of those companies have been out there for over three decades. So the primary markets, it's the major markets of Las Vegas, Phoenix, Southern California. They can all be accessed within the one-day drive time, like Gary had mentioned. The strategic access to major western markets is critical competitive advantage for locating in the Kingman Industrial Park. 19 of the 24 business surveyed indicated their primary market was regional and national. The employee totals, most companies surveyed were operating with less than 100 employees. American Woodmark is the largest employer out there. They were more than 600 employees. So, but the majority of the companies had less than 30 employees. And when it came to the facilities, ninety-five percent of the companies in the Kingman Industrial Park involved their own manufacturing with some form of distribution component. And those are the industries that we target when we're looking to bring in new industries into the park. When it comes to expansion, sixty percent of the companies in the industrial park have already expanded or have plans to expand and modernize their facilities in the coming years. Of the ones that we talked to, it is an estimated of about twenty-nine million dollars in capital investment into technology and real estate in Kingman over the next year, the ones that we were talking to. New product servicing capabilities in the next two years. We asked the companies that question, and seventy-nine percent indicated that they plan to do that. The top industries served are aviation, construction, utilities, residential multifamily, and mining. Total company sales and market share, seventy-two percent of the companies surveyed said their shares were increasing, twenty-four percent indicated they were stable. And when asked about the market share, twelve businesses indicated their market share was stable. The nine firms indicated their market share was increasing. Overall, companies in the Kingman Industrial Park are in excellent position to remain Workforce evaluation, what we did is, is we did a rating scale, one through seven, one low, seven high. We asked them to rate different items, and just, I want to go over some of the community's strengths in regards to these questions. Some of the comments were, the community is exceptional, honest people, good culture, the wages are competitive. Kingman and Manufacturing Association and the educational system is a positive. The location of rail and the availability of trucking, low taxes, again, the proximity to major markets, low cost of living, quality of life and outdoor activities in a great climate were also mentioned, great tourism was mentioned. And then, we also went into the barriers. So, there's the community strengths. We also talked about, you know, what were the barriers to growth that they faced? So, those major ones that were mentioned were access to workforce, traffic control on Stockton Hill Road, rail options in the industrial park, need for retail dining and amenities, fiber to the industrial park, lack of housing, lack of public transportation to the park, city roads and access, lack of land expansion options, technical training for manufacturing, and off-ramps have been talked about for a long time but haven't been constructed. So, some of those barriers to growth, you know, we have had some positive, I guess, movements forward. One of those is around the fiber. So, many years, we've been discussing the lack of fiber options for industries out there. And with recent programs, ALO and WECOM are investing money into the industrial park. And so, as we go through that with those surveys, we talk to those businesses, and they're very happy to, you know, have those options in the near future. Other options, the rail options was discussed, you know, there's a lack of transloading options, and that has actually been addressed. Patriot Rail is currently installing a transloading facility on nine point five acres, consisting of two tracks totaling fourteen hundred feet, and they can handle additional one thousand annual carloads in that facility. So, basically, transloading will allow them to bring it in by rail, take it off by truck, and distribute it. Another item that has been discussed in the past, and we're making good progress on, is the Technical Training and Manufacturing Center out in the park. The city has been working with Mojave Community College for many years, and I will say substantial progress is made on that. They do have a site selected, and they hope to be breaking ground in 2023 on that project. So, some of the recommendations and findings from that was the public transportation component, improved marketability of current industrial park land, complete Phase Two of the industrial park land release, and some workforce housing options are needed. So, just to hit on some of the public transportation component, in 2018, CART, you know, we started looking at that need, and we started doing some surveys. So, there were about a hundred and thirty-four employees that responded to that survey back in 2018, and fifty-five percent indicated they would use CART if it did come to the park. And one of the questions they asked is if, if it took twice as long, would you still use it? It went to fifty percent. And then, if you had to take multiple stops, would you still use it? And they still indicated somewhere around fifty percent. So, that was about a hundred and, I think I said, a hundred and thirty-four employees. You know, right now, we're sitting at about twenty-six hundred employees. You know, so it's a good possibility that many other, of the other employees might have an advantage to having CART. So, something else we need to look at is competitive land options. So, from the economic development standpoint, to be competitive and successful at recruitment and retention, it is highly beneficial for the region to possess a mix of fully improved industrial park sites. Without additional land options, it will hurt the city of Kingman's effort to attract new business, and our current companies are looking to expand. So, since Economic Development Department was funded in 2018, the team has sold roughly sixty point seven five acres of land to various businesses. Fifty percent of those companies that purchased land were existing businesses in the park looking to expand. Something that you guys are well aware of, obviously would come up in the recommendations, would be to complete the Phase Two of the industrial park. So, city staff is attempting a land release of Phase Two currently. You know, originally, a tentative schedule had the process to be completed in December of 2021. Unfortunately, you know, due to various requirements issued by the FAA, the process is continuing. The city is in the process of a master plan as a component of that. So, the release has been scaled back, which you guys are aware of. It's now roughly about seven hundred acres, and that's outlined in the yellow. So, that's what we're looking to, you know, work with the FAA to have released, which will give us plenty of land to do our next phase and accomplish what we would need to And then, the last other option, or the other discussion points is businesses stress the need for their workers to have a place to live. And so, housing is a component. Also, our businesses in town, K R M C brings this up from time to time, you know, when they bring, you know, when they do their recruitment, having a place to be able to house those people is important. And, you know, multifamily housing options are not as prevalent as we wish they would be. So, just point out one other thing when it comes to housing. So, a lot of people, as you're aware, they're leaving major metropolitan areas on the coast for places in central part of the country, such as Texas, Tennessee, Arizona is part of that. So, as they do it, you know, we're in a rural area, and housing is gonna be a major factor. So, as we recruit businesses to our community, they need to have a place for their employees to live. We do have potential developments looking to fill this void currently. However, the developers, you know, they've had delays based upon either getting contractors, maybe funding the projects. A lot of times, contractors for larger projects, they, they're harder to find to come to the community. A lot of the local guys might not have the ability to put a project like that together is what they've been finding. So, you know, those are, those are items that came up in talking with these industries that they did have concerns. One business did indicate that they decided not to expand because, because the other community that they had a location had some of those things addressed. So, with that, would just like to open it up for any questions. I appreciate your guys' time, and I know it's been a long night.
Thanks, Bennett. Counselors?
Any questions for Mr. Bradley, Vice Mayor?
No question. Yeah, no question, no questions. But I just wanted to thank you. This is a really comprehensive, multifaceted report, and I geek out on this stuff. I love this. So, I appreciate this. And I also, I'm happy to see the city so engaged with those out at the industrial park. So, you know, they don't get forgotten about, their needs get addressed, and it really does, because it's, there's so many large-scale employers out there for our citizens, it's so nice to see what their struggles are and how we can help them and just make it better. So, I'm really excited about the progress in the public transportation, because I know we've gone back and forth with that, should we, should we not, is it needed, is it needed, is it not needed? So, I really think that that's gonna help the airpark within the employability of people to have that public transportation. So, thank you so much. I plan to read it cover to cover.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Anybody else? Yes, Counselor Staley.
I just want to underscore that you, since 2018, you've seen sixty point seven five acres sold.
Correct.
And prior to that, there hadn't been any land sales since 2006.
I think 2012.
2012?
2012, there was a land sale to ISCO Industries.
Okay. And then, prior to that, maybe it was 2006. But there, there were not any sales. And then, now, because your department's done such a great job, thank you very much, we are seeing companies expand and relocate here, and we know the same will be true once Phase Two gets opened, and that's a very important thing for our community. So, thank you to the entire economic development team.
You're welcome.
Thank you for getting us there. We appreciate it.
Mayor Watkins, if I may?
Yes, Cameron Pat. Mr. Pat?
Thank you. I was just wondering, how did that other community address the housing need? Do you have any more insight to that?
You know, I didn't get into that with them, but as part of my recommendations, I think, if you read through kind of that, is to look at other communities that have maybe addressed some of these issues, and see if there's some ability to, you know, see if we can do what they can do within state statute that we have here in Arizona, of course. So, yeah, that is part of my recommendation, is take a little bit closer look at some successes.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Anybody else? Okay. Bennett, once again, we appreciate the report and update.
Thanks.
Item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that Mr. Kellogg has decided that he's going to retire again, and there is a retirement celebration for him the first part of February. But the announcement is that, as of today, I have interviewed, and Gary has worked really hard to mentor his replacement, and I offered Mr. Bradley the Economic Development Director position, and he has been kind enough to accept. So, that is my announcement, that we're excited to have Bennett move up. We're disappointed to lose Gary, but know that Bennett has been learning and ready to take the reins and move us forward with economic development. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. And of course, Gary, thanks again for all your service and serving the city. We appreciate it. Counselor Walker?
Nothing.
Counselor Savage? Vice Mayor? Counselor Staley? I think everybody wants to go home tonight, huh?
Nothing.
Counselor Pat?
Nothing.
Okay. I don't have anything. Of course, once again, I would bring one quick thing to anybody's attention. Go to, visit the city website. There you will find activities that are happening in our area, not just in our city, but also in our sister cities and the county, and that is a treasure trove of information. So, once again, we appreciate that. Item number eight, council requests for future reports and updates. Counselors?
I do.
Yes, Counselor Walker?
Going back to the asphalt preservation, I want to make sure that includes residential streets as well, when we see that. And maybe in the future, we can discuss the four-day work week and how that affects our customers, since we are, of course, customer-oriented and trying to give best customer service we can, we maybe need to look at that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I do. I do.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would, just to follow up on my comments from earlier, I would like to see a tourism impact study on our city, revenue count, future projections, and trends.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Staley?
Yes, I understand that there is a forthcoming presentation on preservation. However, I'd like to ask for the next meeting for something just a little bit different. I know that the Streets Department has a lot of responsibilities. I was looking in the budget today at what all they have to do, and they have a limited amount of employees and time and equipment. What I am looking for, for total transparency for, from our pub, for our public, is a quick report on what their responsibility is of the Street Department, how many employees they have, how their time is cut up into all these little pieces. And then, most importantly, I would like an estimate of what they are capable of as far as pavement preservation, both in dollars and in miles per year. And just to give you some context, some of the comments I'm hearing, a few people in the public talking about cutting the entire CIP budget and doing some grand repair of hundred million, two-hundred million dollars. Now, I know that we had agreed to do all repairs in-house. I think we agreed on that last year, and that means there's limitations on how much can be done in a year. And I think that both the council, as we go forward planning, and this is why I'm asking for it in the next meeting, so we can start thinking about this, but both the council and the public need to know what that dollar figure really looks like. Can Jack's team perform ten million, five million, hundred million? We really need to have an idea as we go into this, what they're truly capable of. And that's no slight, you know, to their department. They just have a limited amount of resources and all these responsibilities. So, if I could please get that in the next meeting, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors? We're okay? Yes? Sure, Counselor Walker.
I would like to see, we get a chart of, maybe start of 2002 through 2020, a chart of our revenues we put into our reserve, and also a chart of how we funded the government in the same year. I'd like to see that.
Okay. Actually, one quick thing I wanted to add to, Vice Mayor Samuels, you'd mentioned revenue, and I would like to get an idea of where we are at, just on sales tax revenue, you know, where are we at?
I probably should have announced that we have a budget, a year-to-date, a year-to-date update work session for the council, February 2nd at four o'clock, where most of these things will be covered.
That's true. Thank you for reminding us of that, Manager Foggan.
I'd like that, please.
Yes, Counselor Staley.
I still would like my information before then. And the reason why I ask is because now this has become such a hot topic, and we're being asked so many questions in the community that I really just want to know.
There's not a council meeting before that.
There isn't. Then, I'm so sorry.
Hey, but you tried.
I tried.
You did.
I just really want to get answers, people, that we can make some good decisions.
Sounds like on February 2nd, our answers, most of them will be given to us. Sounds like on February 2nd, our answers, most of them will be, will given to us. Okay, thank you, Manager Foggan. If nothing else, I think we can be adjourned. Thanks again, good night.